All right, we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty four. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner for student deal with general laws. If anybody is recording, that is fine. You have to let us know, anyone? Okay. Uh, seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. Uh, just a few items to share with the planning board members this evening. Um, I wanted to circle back, not to make a discussion, but just to report on the inquiry. Through town council regarding alternative locations for a Verizon's or telecommunications tower. Uh, my response to town council was that the suggested location. At the former Pioneer Dairy presented a greater number of issues than perhaps were encountered. At the uh, location of the original application. Uh, some of this is said in the darkness. I reconstruct what I know. Uh, I pulled some back though. But you all individually in terms of what happened right there. Let's let's insert what Aaron, um, but. The suggestion was. That perhaps some justification um be provided or some further investigation would be undertaken. Uh, looking at some of the other sites that originally were outside of the former overlay districts uh that may be more suitable and have less uh impacts under the current. Wireless teleportation. Uh, I'll also chair, I think everyone knows, but uh, for the sake of. Clarity, transparency, uh, after the issuance of the. Planning board decision for seven seventy one College Highway, the Dollar General project, uh, the decision was appealed. Um, and I think in the interim between. The July, excuse me, the June meeting and the July meeting, there was um. A filing in court challenging the validity of our. So just a heads up uh that uh we're working through, yes, two separate files. Um, so we are, I'm working through a request for information. Um, related not only to that particular project file, uh, but also to all of the. Special permit approvals and denials in the VR district uh in lens ever change out of uh business restricted. So busy work perhaps, but want to make sure everyone was addressed the uh of the doings. I've got nothing much, so I'll have to report them all. Any questions?
Two, Jack, what was the problem with finding this area? What was the biggest concern?
So. The specific concern that I. Shared with down council had to do with uh land. Uh, currently occupied as yard space and rebutting property that was within the traditional fall zone. Uh, there are opportunities for flexibility. For the uh follow radius built into the more recent um telecommunications tower by law. But in my estimation. The flexibility was not intended to allow that falls on to encounter occupied.
Uh, seven o'clock public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that it's not on the agenda that they wish to bring to our attention? Okay.
I'm sorry, may I make one more?
You may.
We'll go back for one second. For the sake of anyone who didn't hear me say it earlier, Samantha Drummond is our new planning board uh administrative assistant. And I remain grateful uh to the town for uh going through the process uh to find her uh and help her begin from uh. Alongside me, so could the light to have her. All right. Um. Sixty-two. Yeah. Um. Am I early? What is in dance on?
Yeah.
You saw your dance a little.
Should we do the counter because we can't continue anything unless we know one that's needing us?
Fair point, excellent point. Um, I was looking for something to do and that is. Maybe number one on this. Thank you, Jessica. Was there, the only one John that I would ask is, are we able to move? Um, that February. Are we able to tighten up the February so that we can expand the March? The reason why we can't do that?
Not that I'm aware.
School vacation is the two seventeen.
Oh, is that? Okay. All right, um.
I know you guys are sometimes different, but.
Yeah, ours is in March. That's why it happened. So, okay, so that makes sense then. Um. So. Yeah, okay. All right.
We have another conflict written into my draft. For November fifth. That needs to be resolved.
What's the go election day?
Yes.
Did um did we look at election day? Is that why May is the way it is?
Yes.
I think confirmation.
So. Um. Why can't we move it the week before October twenty-nine?
We can do that. I had suggested a couple of movements to kind of make it more bi-weekly. Um, if we wanted to change September to the tenth and the twenty-fourth, we could do the eighth and the twenty-ninth in October. Because November has to get moved to the twelfth and then you start hitting Thanksgiving week. So it kind of.
All right, so run run it through just a question so I can see.
You want to give him my that last one I have, John? Or do you not have it pulled up?
So ten, you said ten to twenty-fourth of September, right?
I figured this out late last night, so let me just pull it up so I don't misspeak because I've got a couple of different options here. So September tenth and twenty-fourth.
Yep.
October eighth and twenty-ninth. November twelfth and twenty-sixth. And then do December tenth.
Isn't the twenty-sixth Tuesday before Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
It is. I'm usually the one who complains about that now, but I mean.
Is there a reason why we can't move the December one to the seventeen?
Nope.
And then we can move the November twenty-sixth to the. Uh, second, no, third, yes, thank you. I remember how many days each month has.
What's going to seventeen?
So November would just be the twelfth and then December would be the third and seventeen? Is that ready?
Like we're changing November to what? Hold on, let us figure it out first.
Because November fifth.
Don't put it in your, yeah, I know, that's why we're doing this.
I'm gonna do something special for everyone.
Yeah. You just wanted to see if we were paying attention.
Now we just check in to find out if the past fish is season open. Make sure it's not on a Tuesday this year.
All right, um.
That worked for everybody?
Yeah, and then at the very end of summertime, obviously, we're usually pretty flexible about that, but. The July fifteenth to August nineteenth is a five week. Wait, so I figured if we make it June twenty-fourth, July twenty-second and then August nineteenth, that. Gives us four weeks, four weeks, four weeks instead of.
Okay, yeah.
And your wife does.
Mm-hmm.
I looked, said your wife does.
Uh, anything else?
Not enough leave.
Okay.
So we'll be going starting with September tenth, right?
So September tenth will be the next meeting, yeah.
Great. Thank everyone for your thoughtful review and.
All right, uh, seven-ten continued public hearing six sixty-two A College Highway. We have a request for. Continuation with the aim to get a new layout. To look at in the first week of September. So, uh, do I hear a motion to continue six sixty-two A College Highway to September tenth at seven-ten P M?
Dave's been a soul move.
Take a single second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Dave's been a aye.
Take a single line.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Borton, aye.
All right.
You, here you do.
Seven fifteen continued public hearing Oak Bridge Estates at Moore's Bonnie Road. Tentative subdivision plan and term water management permit application. Oak. Um. All right, um, so. John, yes, well. Um. I can let John talk about whatever he wants to talk about too, but John and I will uh walk through with Terry Reynolds. God knows when it was uh the other day, um, let's put it that way, and uh walk through the site. To look at. Um, where the proposed open space was going to be. So the two. Um, areas with the basins in the front and then the area in the that large lot that is. Forget how many acres in the back there. Okay. Um, and. The. Which I think was extremely helpful, at least in my mind, um, because we were kind of going back and forth about how much to cut off that back lot and make it usable. And when you walk that lot, there's a pretty. Defined. Sort of line of trees that sort of separates two areas and it goes down into a little bit of a. Oh, ditch, but it goes down a little bit and has trees there. And so, um, actually, I took a picture of it, if anybody wants to see it.
Deer shelter for the wind.
So it, you know, in it, and it, and then with the slope two coming up of it, you know, where you would put, where you would cite the house. It kind of makes sense. Um, so that's sort of like the line, you know, so you come in here and then you have this line of trees which kind of goes down into this. Thing, um, so. Anybody can take a look through those if you want, but there's two, only two of them. Um. So I think it's pretty, that is, Terry, where is that spot? Where did that end up cutting it off with the acreage?
Uh, well, we revised it. You you had suggested we needed to make it a little bigger. Um, so we revised it to five acres and I can uh I can share my screen and show you where that falls.
If you could, that would be.
Um, why don't I share, um, got the aerial with it laid out on it and I can share that. Can you all see this?
Give it a minute and hopefully, yes.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, can you see my pointer?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the area that we're talking about for open space. When we walked out, we walked out along what would be the access through here. And this was what we saw for the tree line where the slope starts breaking. And it goes down to a a sort of flat area down here and sloped on both sides. Uh, so we now we've got about five acres back here, leaving this area that can be, you know, a more of estate type lot in here. Um, so it's a nice, nice treat area going down and back here. Uh, you know, a trail system can come in and loop around and, you know, come back, nice little lollipop back there.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's if you're what being proposed. Um, sort of benefits from that area in the back versus the area in the front. Um, I think more if you're going to put in some trails or, you know. Use that as the open space.
Will there be an established trail to get to that?
Yeah, that's the other discussion point, right, and how we want to deal with that. Um. You know, Terry, I don't know where that, where did that end up falling as far as the proposal? For how to maintain.
Well, I mean. You know, I think, you know, it's it's relatively easy to mark between blazing trees and and staking posts where needed. Um, so that's clear where the trail is. I think, um, it would make sense to maybe mark some boundaries along this route. On both sides where the trail is. Um, uh, basically, this is showing a twenty-foot wide. Uh, route to come through. Uh, it would be completely dedicated for the open space. It's not just an easement. Um, and the benefit of that is it also creates a setback so that a house that gets built in here can't get too close to this access point. And vice versa. Um. And, you know, I think the ongoing, you know, once it, once the. The trail is established, you know, the association or those using it will need to, you know, do ongoing maintenance to continue that. Um, you know, to make, to ensure it doesn't get all growing in or whatever. Uh, it's pretty enough way it is. The the woods are fairly open in it uh in the understory and stuff, so it it's. Pretty, pretty ready for for having that developed that way.
Did you have a proposal for how to delineate it at the beginning of the trail?
Uh, you know, we could delineate it with um wood chips. Um, the proponent's going to have an abundance of those once he starts tipping up the the stockpiles of trees and brush that are left. Um, so we can start it by doing that along with some blazing to to make it clear where the edges are on on that access going in.
Would sign be appropriate for that?
I mean, in my mind, I think. Um. I think some kind of permanent markers. I mean, we did it over at the Greens. But having some sort of permanent markers at the entrance is probably. A useful thing. Um. You know, keeping in mind, it's obviously between two properties, and so you want to be respected to spectral for the property owners, but. I think something that is permanent at the entrance needs to be there because reality is, I mean, that, you know, ideally, they keep up the trail and the wood chips, but. You know, that's something that may very well. Uh, not stay there, so, um.
Yeah, depending on the, it is. Um, so it'll need to be maintained over the time. So I, you know, I think markers and and vowels in the audience there, uh, but, um. I think markers seem fine, seem appropriate.
Yeah, and I, um, what's the, do you remember the language we had in the uh Greens? You don't have to pull it up right now, but.
I'm sure I have it available.
Yeah. Um, I mean, at some point, before we get to the opinion, we'll probably pull it up. Um.
What's past this open land? Is somebody else's property?
The land.
Out in here?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, is that somebody else's property?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not, it's not part of the development. Um.
Okay.
I hear, and Terry, is that owned by? Um, Val as well or no?
No, no, these are, these are other owners.
Okay, you own the stuff on that?
Yes.
Yeah, over here.
Sorry, I guess not, no. I'll plug you up anyways. Um, okay. Um. Okay.
Does this bring the total open space number two?
Terry.
So we end up with a total open space of just over ten acres. Um. And so that translates to, um, approximately. Uh, we're ten percent is seven point six, so. Uh. You know, what is that, um, thirteen percent or something, somewhere in that range?
You know, and I think as much as I've had issues with using the basins as open space, and I do still have a. Issue with that as a principle, right, or alone. The size of the one, um, you know, if you're looking at the plants to the right there, the larger of the two is actually potentially a decent. Open space to use. I wouldn't necessarily know. It shouldn't necessarily be by itself, but I think when in combination with this one in the back. It provides two sort of different options of open space and, um, you know, it's it's a nice, uh, a useful. Something that is actually potentially going, has the potential at least to be used as, um, open space.
Yeah, this is a nice, this is a really pretty nice wet meadow down in here. Um, obviously, we have a basin right in here, but this this area behind here is. A wooded area. There's a little little pond in there, um, you know, and so it's it is a, it is a nice little space in there. Uh, you know, this this space here, you know, it it has limited use, you know, and I I agree. Um, but it's also, you know, it'll it'll be a nice space if somebody wants to go out and just sit and take in the day, um, sort of spot.
Okay. Um, any other, um, questions or comments from the board? For the open space that large, the five acre. Section in the back there, how is the boundary between it and the adjoining residential lot defined? Or marked?
Mistake, mistake.
I know you're seeking the trail to get to it. I think we'll do the same for the. Um, on that view, at least the one the the up and the vertically running boundary. In the back, I mean? Yeah, in the, in the, well, I guess in the front of the open space. Right here? Yeah. Um. Yeah, I mean, that's got to be delineated in some way. Um. Uh, though I, you know. And it has to be delineated in some way. I guess I have less concern about that only because. It's going to be the property owner who's going to want to do that. So, um, yeah. So, but I mean, I do think that that in that we can sort of. Um, you know, I think the permanent. In my mind, the permanent markers have to be at the front of the trail. Um, you know, we can be. I don't want to say less formal, but, you know, using, you know, ways of trees or whatever to.
A lot of people do like a diagram of that. They have, it's like a diagram of the open space on the sign going in. You go back three feet and then you got access. Always, always a good guidance. Visual.
Yeah.
Yeah, once, once a trail's in there, you know, I mean. Folks making mountain bike trails and all that, basically you skid off the. The pine needles or leaves and you create a trail that way. And then you may put some blazes on on trees as you go in. Um, and that's going to stay there for quite a while and depending on the use. Um, if there are blazes out there, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll take quite a while before you lose the trail again. Um, so it'll, it'll take people going out and maintaining it and using it. If it's used regularly, it won't be a problem.
Okay.
You know, and then if it's not, obviously, then then you don't have to worry about people going out there, so. But.
Um. Okay, any other, um. Questions or comments from the board? Or is any, um, town officials have any questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? All right. And do I hear a motion to, uh, close the hearing?
Dave's been a soul move.
Take a single second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Dave's been a aye.
Take a single line.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Borton, aye.
Okay. All right, um, we will hit a few other things and then we will. Get into the decisions and the vote. Um. Which is somewhere in what, uh, between business, right? Do you have it there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
If anything, it's going to be, um. Help you to bong one, but don't, never mind.
Okay. All right. Uh, seven-twenty public hearing, two fifty College Highway. Proposed renovation reconstruction of a pre-existing non-compiling dwelling. Special permit and site plan approval application.
I think you for a matter that's part of the town which I love, should be pretty quick or do you want to?
Believe what first, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, this was by that, it's here for a matter that's. First, we go to get into the other period, um. We plan to discuss, you know, does it not, what? Thirty-seven.
So, yeah, is there, um. Rich, you're here, you're here for the, uh, depot, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, 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 I don't mind taking that. I mean, that's going to be quicker, so, um.
It's gonna be, sorry.
Yeah. We will, let's, I haven't opened up the public hearing yet, so, um, no, 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 you're, no, no, you're. I said, I I'm talking about the, uh, fifty college, I haven't opened it up, so. We'll pop this thing in on this discussion, so Depot Square. Request to release performance security under this term water management permit.
This is just for your files.
Yeah.
Yeah, I picked up where we left off a month ago. You, you, Rich Seibek on behalf of twenty depots square LLC, Tim Lucier. He just asked me to, uh, look into the bond and then reach out to Ben Coyle or or Mark Begline. And I did, and so I sent him everything. Uh, Mark and I had multiple conversations. He had three comments to the MOU, which I made changes on. One was to put a time restriction, one hundred and eighty days, which I put in there. One was to make sure the manhole cover gets tied into the indemnification, which I did. And lastly, to tie the town into the indemnification, which I did. And as a result thereof, on the the very first page is Mark's last email to me. Send the revised MOU is acceptable and the planning board at discretion can release the current letter of credit as as its members wish. So, um, that's what he asked me to do, and that's what I did. And Mark's all good with it. And I gave you a copy of the of the final, final draft with those three very, very minor changes that he wanted. And that's it. And sooner we can. Release the letter of credit, the faster we can get in the grounds.
Over a few years.
Oh, wow. Twenty-twelve, I think, is when the letter credit was first issued. March five, twenty-twelve. March five, twenty twelve.
Sorry, I'm just trying to.
So in the planning board, huh?
That's, yeah, there you go, that's exactly what I am. That's the only thing that I'm just trying to run through in my head and just see where it. The references are correct.
Yeah, so the indemnity was in paragraph one D and two. Um, and I added specifically the planning board, he was, he was fine with, but I can. I can, at your request, I can reprint that and put the town of Southwick in the Southwood Planning Board. I can do that in two, I, I can do that tomorrow, and I'll send that by, I can just report that to John. Back to Mark, said the planning board just said add town of Southwick and we're all in concurrence with it.
Yeah, I think wherever it's referenced in here, it should reference both the town of Southwick and the planning board only because. Um, you know.
Yep, got you, yep, not a problem, take two seconds, yeah. Now for the final, final draft again. To John.
And so, yeah, Rich, can you just um? The three changes again.
Right, so on paragraph one D.
Yep.
He just wanted me to add the language to include the one manhole cover in front of unit number nine. So I did that, and then he wanted the language at the end, um, to put the town of Southwood Planning Board in paragraph one D. And then lastly, he wanted it in paragraph two. That was it.
All right. Um, so I think with those changes. We can think that. So basically, wherever in this memorandum of understanding, there is a reference. The kind of topic or the kind of topic playing board, it'll. Um, so with that, um, do I hear a motion to? Um, let me make sure I'm reading this correctly. Do I hear a motion to release the performance security on the stormwater management permit for uh depot square uh in exchange for the execution of. Uh, this agreement with the town and the condominium owners association.
Dave's being a so moved.
David something aye.
Thank you very much.
Well done, well done, Dave. Lee, come on up. I do appreciate the respect for an attorney's time, I mean, I really. Coming from someone who's been charged by an attorney. All right. That's lovely, all right, so, um. Public hearing for two fifty College Highway.
Make you move quick, I don't know, now send your pocket.
Notice of public hearing, uh, notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of master law chapter forty eight, section eleven of the town of Southwood by law. Planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, August twenty to twenty twenty fourth, seven twenty P M via Zoom and in the town hall of four fifty four College Highway, Southwood Mass. On an application by Andre Mosuleski. For a special permit and site plan approval for property located in two fifty College Highway and the residence forty R forty zone. Property shown on current assessors and have one thirty three, test of fourteen. The applicant proposes to permit the renovation slash reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling in accordance with the code. Southwood zoning bylaws after one eighty five, section. Sections nine, ten, twelve, twenty eight and thirty, soon information is provided. Copy of the application and plans may be expected by contact and town planner, John Goddard, at its phone or email, any person. Interested or wishing to be heard on the matter should appear at the time of manner designated by authority, check versus Southwick planning board. Okay, please. Laura Jones.
Uh, good evening, for the record, Lee Cravel, Alavec Associates, here tonight, uh, for the special permit application. Um, for the property at two fifty College Highway. Um, just to familiarize with the property, I believe this has been in front of the, the board before. Uh, before the zoning uh bylaws were amended, uh, but there's, there is an existing residential building. Located on the property, the property as it currently sits is in the R forty zone, and it has. A, which requires, obviously, if you're gonna subdivide today, would require forty, you know, a forty thousand square foot lot. So the lot itself is a twenty four thousand one hundred eighty eight square foot lot, there's an existing residential building. Um, with a four apartment units. Um, and we have records um based on the assessors and water data that support that this. This was in residential use, so basically the special permit, it had, was filed under section. Um, what was it, one, one eighty five, twenty eight, uh, B one. B one two, I believe, B one A two. Which says that um, any abandoned or discontinued. Uh, use for a period equal to or greater than three years, but less than ten years may be. Altered upon a special permit granted by the planning board, so what we are proposing is to maintain the residential use. A four unit apartment building on the property. At, in the same general location of the existing building with a, with a modified site plan and. Um, and that is the application that is in front of the planning board. So it's an existing residential four unit building that we are proposing to. Reconstruct slash alter into a four unit residential building. Which uh we believe under the zoning bylaws is allowed by a special permit through the planning board. So with that, I can uh help. Uh, answer any questions the board may have. Really generally the, the gist of the application, existing four unit apartment building. To be altered into a new four unit target.
We definitely need some help, no?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, um, we have board of health records that kind of. Kind of point out a few uh questionable items that, you know, the building just obviously was built in nineteen hundred, so obviously it's been. It's been around for a while, so.
What's the deal with the nineteen parking spaces? Nine plus four plus six.
Yes. Um, I mean, that's the parking spaces that are shown. Um, so if you have four, maybe two per.
It should just be eight, maybe nine, if you wanted to be generous for guest parking, maybe ten. But it's like you guys are pulling in the driveway, right? It's like right now, it's just kind of a gravel.
Correct.
Why add that much?
Yeah, many parking spaces, absolutely, um, yeah, I don't see a practical calculation around here, so we can certainly reduce.
Hack out those back six of the minimum.
Minimum of these back six here, the ones around the building, like, just kind of makes sense to do that. But you're right, need those back six there.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even approve of banking on them, to be honest. You don't need that many.
They're gonna, you're gonna try and use that front facade on that building, so?
Oh, I don't know.
All right, um. So I'm just trying to go, I mean, I'm trying to go through. I guess, well, let's back up for one second. So. How many, where are we standing, you know, with days?
Oh, how many days until I was expected?
Till we hit that ninety day, it's nine days or? No, no, when it's, when the, when it's. Yeah, getting structural approval by the AP office, right, they, they have a certain time, right?
I believe. I'm gonna go with ninety days for the, for the time, I believe that's the, it's their review period. But that's ninety days following the supplemental of information through the town court.
Correct. All right.
So we're um approaching it, um, but I would say not quite there.
You have. Putting aside how this goes tonight and whether we need to go to another. Hearing date or whatever else, right, putting that aside. Um, do you have thoughts on, as a general matter, whether it makes sense? Uh, to continue this to the next meeting? Simply to get beyond the Attorney General approval period because you are applying under a bylaw. That hasn't gone through the process, and it was approved at town meeting. The Attorney General has a set period of time, which, off the top of my head, I don't know, um, to approve it. And if it's built in such that. If the Attorney General doesn't say anything within a period of time, it gets approved by, you know, the passage of time. Um, so that is probably. Sometime toward the end of this month, maybe into September a little bit. Right, it depends on when the town clerk sent it and assuming that we're right on the ninety days, and I, I think we are because that's. Generally, then my memory is that like it's September, beginning of September is when these things get approved. So I, you know, in this, I'm just throwing this out to you, just may not have thought about it before, but. Um, you know, it may make sense from an, from a risk standpoint for the applicant. To let that play out before.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, um, I guess it would only be. Does that, would that conflict with the special permit timeline? Cause there also, there's, there's, there's a certain period in which. The board needs to act. It close. But so long as the uh matters continue.
Continue.
Through the public hearing process, then that kind of helps.
Got it, so, just, I mean, again, you don't have to make a decision right now, and it may be that we have to continue it as a board. Anyways, right, um, so, but just to put that, because I. My understanding is that the advice is that you could. Act. But the risk is on the applicant. Um, though I still think that's a bit of an open question as to whether we have the authority to act when something. Hasn't been approved by Attorney General, but I think that at least legal, like, uh, counsel has been. We can act like this is the matter at hand, but the risk is on the applicant. Until such time as it has actually been approved by them.
Yeah, it's a board, well, so if the board, I mean. Would make a decision. Could we just like wait to do anything until after that has been ratified?
But may not be right.
But it may not be ratified, which would then make the decision kind of move.
Unless you think that there is, unless there is some. Degree of urgency to, again, this, this sort of doesn't, um. Factor in if the board decides we want another, we want to continue it out and talk about more, but putting that aside. Unless there's some urgency to getting a decision. Well, frankly, you're not gonna get a decision tonight because we're gonna have to drop off the decision and vote on it, so you're not gonna get.
We need a new site plan without the parking spaces.
Correct, so you're not gonna get that until the next meeting, no matter what.
Okay.
Um, so it probably makes sense to simply. At the end of this today, continue it on to the next meeting, even if it's just for. Uh, submitting the new site plan and getting passed that timeframe hopefully. And then, you know, we could presumably uh close it and vote on it at the next. One, I think, you know, if we can get that decision done in a timeframe. Um.
Okay, yeah, that makes, I think that.
You know, it's just to have that in mind, um, but let's, so let's, I mean, we're gonna go under the presumption that. That new. Bylaw is in effect. So as I'm going through this. I mean, I guess the question I have, right, is. And I don't know how far Randy can go back. But, right, like you've gone back to. Two thousand, like in two, in, in two thousand and. Eighteen. The bill issued in October had zero usage. Right, so for that prior six months, there was no one looking. And then there is some usage. Over that winter. And then. There's a slight amount of usage. In, you know, over the next four months, looks like. And then it's down basically to. I mean, I, I guess I just, you know, I mean, the, the. The burden is on the applicant, right, to show that. It's been abandoned for a period less than ten years, right? That'll fall into that.
Correct, so less than ten years, so the special permit is required when it's. If it was a, yeah, between three and ten, so if it was under three years, it would be a site plan that year. Based on the, the way the bylaws were, but between three and ten, it's a special permit.
Correct. And so. I mean, I guess I just. A winter of some. Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I guess I'm, that's where I'm trying to figure out whether that's.
Three years, I mean, from right now, three years will be August of twenty one.
Well. I mean, I think I'm willing to give. Some, um. Benefit of the doubt, I mean, though I don't think that's necessarily true, I don't think it's that linear, I mean, I think you. If, if in the eighties or nineties, this was abandoned for more than ten years, I think that stops the. Fuck, right, but I mean, I, it's, I'm not sure we can ever figure that out, so I think realistically, you're probably just going back like that. But, but then I also just. The fact that someone happened to be there. Um. I, I, something was being used, I don't see any evidence of there being any. Necessarily a resident there of uh payment of that.
In eighteen, there was. Um, that's where the, the notice of violations from the board of health. Uh, they go back to twenty eighteen where. The residents, whoever was living there filed complaints with the board of health for certain things. That were wrong with the, with the building.
How do we know that the resident filed it, I guess? Oh, you know, I think that, all right, so we can. All right, I see it. And then has that before? In the notes of violation. As a result of a tenant complaint. Okay. Okay.
That's eighteen.
Okay. Alright, that, that makes sense to me. I just, again, I just. It's not that I think this is a good use for this. I just don't necessarily want to sort of. You know. Change the bylaw and then sort of polarize to any. You know, thing that gets us within that, um, it makes it um. And, you know, anybody can come in, so. That's all. I want to actually mean something. Um, okay, so then. Parking spots, anything else about the site plan that the board has questions or comments on?
What about the septic? Issue? Has it? Been looked at to make sure it's of size to continue a four unit? Or is it?
Um, so I think we would probably. We can shut the septic system. If you judge it like that, but. A new septic system, because we wouldn't try to utilize. Existing, because, you know, unless it was built. Since Title V for a four unit, uh, for uh, we did.
Do we have a multi-family? Separate septic requirement, or does that not apply within a? Apartment building? Is that just a two family?
I think that's the distinction.
Of. I didn't want to set you up for failure, then I'd be like, there's no room for four different septic systems, I forget.
Alright, so you're, I mean, essentially acknowledging that if there's, there's a condition on it that's gonna require. You know, new.
Yeah, or, yeah, or a subject, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. It's.
Um, and your plan is probably to put it entirely. System in there, you know.
Yeah.
Was probably in the system. Okay. Alright, any other um questions or comments on the board? Okay. Um. Any uh town officials have any questions or comments?
I'll throw a few, if that's all our insurance. Um. So. We did receive uh. Non comments from D P W um. Fire Department and Police Department. Uh, police and fire both observed that. The existing access served the uh existing facility. I feel that any safety concerns, lots of site distance, both directions. Uh, and D P W had no new comments. The only comment they had. Uh, from last fall was related to, to all the water usage in the timeframe related to. Previous one eighty five twenty eight. Um. I'll share that I think what uh is sought is a special permit um with findings. For both the structure and the use. Uh, in this district, this is our forty zone. Um, so we are working slightly beyond the existing footprint. Um, since the structure, special permit, and then of course the four family uh use in this district. Looking for the uh, I feel the use special permit related to that. Um. Please feel pardon my timing uh as I've been out of the office, but I shared or reshared, if you will, my November. It was November uh comments uh just from previously, which relate to some items that. Mrs. Thornton uh brought up. Uh. I don't recall. The, um, arc of the public hearing got very conversational real early when we, when it was made apparent. I think we got a brick wall that stopped about. Do that lapse. Um. But I honestly don't recall if Rob ever uh shared or if you ever shared um. Any further information about architecturals. Um. I don't think I go to great deal in my prior comment letter, but just wanted to uh share that if something uh is available. To form as the basis of the board's uh decision, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, um, we don't have any architectural at the moment. But um. Maybe conceptual might, would make sense. To get something or as a condition. Come back with an architectural plan of the proposed building. Something along those lines. I think, you know, architectural plan would make absolute sense. Um, just how to get it in front of the board. Or when the tenant is about to. To get it.
And what's gonna be the scope of the? Renovation? Or is it gonna be a complete?
Yeah, so I think the intent at this point is to just the new, just.
Entirely, not any part of it being cut.
Correct. If there's any historical processes that need to happen to get to there, I wish. Or we're going to uh, to do that process.
Okay. Um. Same footprint?
Generally the same location, um, the.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would mean on the same foundation.
Not, not the same foundation, so it's generally the same footprint.
Okay.
A little bit um outside, but just to kind of square it off really, there's some bump, bump outs and things.
Yeah.
On the existing building.
With an entirely new foundation.
Yes.
Good. Okay, um. Anything else?
Hmm.
Oh. Uh, any public comments? John.
Well, do you, right, are you getting those real top with, the septic doesn't fall on you guys, right?
Hmm, it does not. It'll be a condition.
Yeah.
But it'll be. It, it, you know, they'll need approval.
Oh, yeah, actually. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, any other color comments? Okay. Um. Yeah, so I mean, I think you have your. Marching orders. For what to submit for the next hearing. The next one is on. The next scheduled meeting is on September tenth. Um, is that something that? You know, whatever you need to get done before that is perfectly. Capable of getting it done before then.
Modifications and site plans should, uh, well, we're doing that timeframe. Architecturals, I'm not sure, but, you know. The board is open, putting a condition, if we don't have it by then, just come back to the architecturals before anything happens. Because I think there might be a historical component to that as well.
Alright, we can figure out if there's. I mean, do your best if you can get something to us, but if not, then we can try to. We just ra- raise the issue as early as you can with John so that we can kind of. Start to think about language and. Power. That all we've been conditioned on.
We also want to see like. If you're totally changing where the exterior doors are going to be, because that's going to matter for sidewalk and stuff like that, so.
Um. Okay, um, and then obviously, like you said, I think it makes sense to take it out anyways to. Get past that deadline if there is, you know.
Hundred and ten, yes.
And I don't know the answer, so we'll try to figure that out in the meantime.
Yeah.
Um, and we can. Uh, go from there. Um. Alright, so do I hear a motion to continue? This public hearing to. Um. Seven fifteen. There's nothing else on, right? Okay, seven fifteen on um. September tenth. Dave's P S O moved.
Because he is second.
We're all called both by the authority. I.
Dave's been out. Do you trust me, Ryan?
Good or something, I just before and I.
Alright. Perfect. David, please, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, friends.
Which one am I gonna give my book?
Well. One forty minute, um. Is there anybody here for the sign from? Yeah. Anybody here for either the sign permits at one forty one Congamont or eighteen Hudson Drive? Alright.
Thank you.
So, so we, we can put, we can put those off. Um. Play plan review for two twenty Chief Pasture Road.
I have no new information.
Okay.
Anybody here for?
That's the one where they're trying to figure out something with the. That's your neighbor, right?
And certainly.
Yeah. So we'll just kick that off to the next. Meeting, um. Alright, so why don't we? Get to the. Districts. On Oak Ridge, that seems to be the biggest thing and get through that and we can come back and we'll find. Um.
Well. If you can always hear anything specific.
Huh?
I couldn't hear anything.
Yeah, no, that's the other thing. Is anybody here for anything specific besides those things that we just mentioned?
No, not anything. I guess it's not.
Okay, was, what were you here for?
Um, I was, two Lakemont's gonna be coming up pretty soon and it's a house that was already torn down over a year ago. As asbestos on at the state was in there last week. The Board of Appeals approved these guys to build a three-story, two-story house, car, one car garage. Moved within twelve feet of the property line, which is three feet to my bedroom window now and my air conditioner and it just, it just doesn't fit.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's gonna end up in front of us if it's not, if the use is. Existing, then.
There is, the house was torn down, it's gone.
Who's here?
I got just, he's trying to tell me that their drawing says sixteen feet from the property line. And they said Google said fourteen feet and you look at your G S I, your own picture from your assessor, the houses are built thirty feet apart.
What's the address again? I'm sorry, sir.
Two Lakemont Street. I'm on ten.
Two Lakemont?
Yes, that's right. It's really bad. They, they, they can't do that.
And is that, that's an R twenty zone, do you know?
R, I don't, I don't know.
That's okay, that's fine if you don't.
It's R something, yeah.
It's gotta be R twenty.
It's, 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 it's point two of an acre, it's not even a.
Yep.
Acres.
And so, um.
I'm scared. I don't want to move to my house and I don't want to die in here from, from cartoons.
Yeah, so I, I suspect that it's not gonna, I mean, you can keep a look at our agenda. I suspect that it's not gonna end up on our agenda only because. Um, in the R twenty zone, it's a residential use and they're just continuing their residential use, and so they don't have to come to us.
Well, then I put the Board of Appeals to me, it's gotta go to you guys now, because they didn't even file for the special permits, even for the non-conforming law, nothing was done. Nothing was filed to tear down the house, nothing was filed to build, to rebuild a new construction or to build on.
Yeah.
Site, it just all disappeared. They said the next step for those guys. Is to come here, so I wasn't sure it was gonna get slid in on the plan board, so I came here tonight, because it's been just there twenty days now.
He's tense.
I'm scared. Very scared.
So, um.
Very, very.
Let's do this. Um, I, I don't wanna, you know, you don't have to sit through all tonight, because it's not on tonight. Why don't you, um?
I'm Michael.
We can make us, yeah, grab, John will grab your information.
Well, thank you, guys. It's, I don't, I'm not really gonna come back in the.
I'm trying to think of it, it's been torn down. And it's not conforming, just, yeah.
An empty lot now. Said they told, they tore up any down.
But what did they, the question is, what did they get from the Board of Appeals? Because we can't control what the Board of Appeals is gonna do.
So.
So, I'm not sure it's coming to us, but I don't know what the Board of Appeals, and so I think we just had a week of. Working around and seeing the decisions. I don't, I don't know the answer.
So this house was, you know, in my eyes, it was, it was.
I'm not sure. If the Board of Appeals gave them, really comes back to whatever else. Doesn't mean it's not, it's, and you can do it. Yes. Right, it's a, it's a residential use, a residential zone.
Yeah, I'm moving in.
And it's no longer, it's, it's no longer nonconforming because.
And they still don't have enough.
That's not about performance, because if, if the. Court of Appeals have given them the.
With that total wheel.
Variance.
Three or four more feet.
So, I don't, um, but it's something we can certainly look into more for. For him. Alright, um. Everybody have a chance to go through the. Um. The decision. Now, if you want to take a quick look through it now, just. I mean, it's not. Rapid science is one is pretty. Similar to others. We can go through it to make sure it has all the conditions that we need. But this is, I just give minutes to kind of go through it and then we'll kind of. Run through it on the screen. And the other thing to keep up, you know. Obviously, the waiters, um, make sure you're comfortable with all the waiters, because that's gonna be on there. Um. Yeah, yeah, conditions are, so, so.
You know, I was just thinking the um.
Three hundred.
Because we've been talking so much about what the number is exactly for this decision, especially. Um, on page six, that section C, where we talk about. Uh, the allowing for structures or buildings to be built, but, but only can, it cannot exceed five percent coverage. Can we just put that number there? Can we like do the math and put the actual number in there so that in ten years, when somebody from the H O A maybe comes and says, hey, we want to put up a gazebo. Dear Mr. Planner, whoever you may be at that time, what exactly is five percent of, and what number of the, of what, right? I. Is that cool? And everybody are like that?
Good evening. Future planning board. Alright.
Your future planning board. It's a gift from Jessica. We're gonna do the math ahead of time.
I'll be tired soon.
That's right, we'll, we'll have to visit you somewhere and ask.
Bring up the decision so that.
No, forty, I guess.
Yeah. No, no, I'm just saying, I got really just. Period, just see if, but. Bring it up.
We did it during the meeting.
Like the first one. For our.
Okay. You're gonna hang around here, make sure we do this tonight and make sure we do it right.
There's a few questions, that means here I wanted to kind of, you know, talk about, you know, something that John. Was the. Uh, the three months construction of retention parts, stormwater parts uh prior, after the speeding or approval. Then we wanted to extend to at least nine because of the water, they're going to the fall and on the winter. And first of course, we're shocked, we have to do about the cost, and that's gonna take some time, the weather thing will be able to go into the frame. So that's one, number one, that we want to push it to nine months or maybe twelve months, because the ideal time for us to work there with the weapon process will be like in May. If the summer is the driest season, uh versus right now, we're in September, by the time we get approved next to October, we're gonna have a rainy season, a little bit master. We're gonna create more problems. Uh, that's number one, we'll extend that and also uh the full construction of the full face construction. Uh, the subdivision for five years, maybe take it to the seven years, just in case that can, you know. Of course, give us uh more flexibility in time. Uh, we'll get it started to it, but I'm like, you know, on that, that property. But it's gonna be wise for us to start in the process of full or. Because first it has to be the weather process, you know, for us to get to the area where we're gonna start to install. And what they cross them as I feel to do it. Uh, and they. That's my, you know, I told that to Terry this morning, I read through the job, the notes that I read the most, just go through, I think we can. Address them from there and they will be going, then you guys go instantly done. But Terry also online, you know, keep the person with me. Uh, makes sense. Terry, what do you think?
Oh, Terry, was there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I mean, uh. Uh, no, I, I think, you know, just want to make sure that not. Creating a, something that can't meet. You know, um, it's a tricky site, spring. You know, if, we don't know what's happening with the. You know, the weather these days, um. So. You know, he's, it's gonna be. You know, time to get in there, first of all, and as he says. Um. The, the, the stormwater will have to come quickly as the road gets developed, he's gonna have to start. We're gonna have to start with that basin and then, you know, the stormwater is gonna have to get connected pretty quickly after that. Um, but. Got to, he's got to develop the access first and that's gonna take a little time and then. Also, you know, getting a, a construction group mobilized may take a little time too, because we're in the midst of. High construction season, so I'm not sure how soon somebody will be able to even start.
Okay. Alright, we'll consider those as we're going along here and um. Are you have that up? First page here.
Yes.
That sounds. Did you fill in the um?
The two blanks. So yes, we have three um extension letters, so I went back to the back and then the mono data and the project nineteen.
I just scroll down so you have the whole, um, procedural history, or at least, yeah. Anything, um, that needs to be changed. Um, on page one here.
I'm gonna remove Diane, she's not here for. Oh, and I believe she may, like, I've missed another one.
The best of mental.
Yeah, we should be going to the next meeting, uh, next. Put it for the position too, so. So we have well-hubbed interview. I don't know, that's something I've. So. I think I, sorry, the only thing I was running through my head, John, is whether we should put in something about the site, they said they're not, um. We don't necessarily need to do that, we haven't done that in the past. Uh, so general findings, let's start there, anything with the general findings, um. That anybody wishes to change or correct.
I didn't have a time to review the four panels, I was silent there, I just got this about three o'clock PM, so. I just went through highlighted areas and the ones that actually came out to my attention, that's what Terry about the dates.
Yeah, the dates are usually pretty, and we're usually pretty good with those dates.
You guys are flexible, I'm flexible, I just wanna come one way.
Alright, so general findings, anybody have anything? Definitive plan findings, uh, one through four. What, we gotta fill in that, um, what was the final number on that plan?
I listened very carefully.
Ten point five two is open space, I don't, that's not including the basins though.
Their email said twelve something.
Yeah, I've got, Steve reported to me that it gives ten point oh two acres of open space.
Ten point oh two.
That's what he's got.
With the basins not included in that.
Believe that's not including the basins. I think he took those out. He's got three point seven three.
Oh, there was a change.
Water one. One point three for stormwater two and five acres for lot four.
Alright, so it's up. Was that, John, what you see on it, on the, on the latest ones?
As we work our way through, we'll be happy to.
Okay, just confirm that and make sure that's right. Alright, uh, anything else on definitive plan findings, one hoop board? Waivers. Um, I guess let's start with the. First one here. Everybody okay with this?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, there you go. Everybody okay with waiver number two? Yes. Waiver number three. Somebody say with that. Well, here's the only issue of number three. I don't like prior to the issuance of any building permits. Because it creates a problem, which is what happened over at the Greens and I'm not sure it ever got corrected. Is that property gets sold. Deeds are created and filed with the registry and there is no reference in the deed to. Easements, covenants, restrictions, what have you. Right? That's the problem, I, I don't think it's, it doesn't have to be, I, I have no problem waiving a requirement that it submitted with the application. But I think that the tying it has to be to the issuance, uh, or to the, um. Execution of any deeds, it has to be approved before that so that it can then be. It has to be approved and filed with the. Um, registry of deeds so that. It can be included in any deeds for the property, so I mean, I hope that if comes to the issue and I think that played out, I don't think the Greens, everything. So, um, I would just change that to the prior to the, um. I would, I would do a good job. I think instead of a lot, um. Maybe put allow and require. Right to the. Conveyance of any individual. Just since you're here, Rob, do you understand what I'm?
Yes, I understand, we don't have the covenants, learning conditions.
And that's fine, but that whenever you convert, whenever you sell an actual lot in that deed will have to be. Reference to already recorded covenants and restrictions.
Correct.
So those have to be approved by the planning board and filed with the registry before you convey any lot.
Correct, um, the construction phase of a subdivision is conditional upon us obtaining those covenants or we can do that after. Drawn out the covenants.
As far as the infrastructure, um, and it, you can do whatever you want there, well, I shouldn't say that. You can do all the work without conveying individual lots, it's, it's, you can't convey a lot until you have. These approved and filed with the registry. Um, because that's the only way to make the individual lot holders subject to the.
But if the lot doesn't have an A, like your easement sign, but just the covenants.
Correct, they have to be tied to the deeds too, so.
Correct, we'll draw that out before, before you're in class.
Yeah, 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 there's gonna be plenty of time before you're conveying lots, so.
Not too long.
Yeah, yeah. To your disappointment, but it won't be come off. Uh, okay, so that's all set, um, number four. Um, any issue with number four? Number five.
I have a question on five, um, you know, the revolving sidewalk account. Um, you know, I don't have the numbers for most of this. What is, what are we talking?
Yep, so what, uh, the way it plays out in the bylaws is, um. It's a discussion to be had, I think it basically is a discussion to be had with Randy Brown, right, um, with DPW. Uh, as far as sort of valuing, um, you know, the sidewalk that is being taken out. Um, and there is a, a fund that's used for.
So how much are we looking at?
I.
That's what the question, before we even start moving over here.
Oh, is it in there?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't remember seeing it, what is it, where is it?
Page seven.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's good. Okay.
Uh, letter M. So it's sixty dollars per linear foot. I think I would look at, what would the town have to pay someone to install it? It probably isn't that much, I don't, I couldn't tell you specifically. I retract myself.
That's a lot of linear footage you were talking about.
I forget how long your.
I mean, I, I don't mind. Well, I mean, you don't have a site plan. You're, you're required under the bylaws to have sidewalks, um, signs, and so. Uh, the way the bylaw structure is, if you are granted a waiver to allow only one side, then sort of the. Cost of the other ones goes into this revolving bond, which allows for repair and maintenance of. Um, you know, other sidewalks in town, so.
That's the figure we used before, so, I think.
No, this, uh, it gets adjusted, uh, roughly every year.
I, I mean, I don't, um. When does that get put, is there a timeframe when the deposit gets put in for the?
Prior to the issuance of any building permits.
I mean, I'm not necessarily in my mind committed to putting in a number into this.
Take it out or pay for her building permit, her problem is with a lot that doesn't have a sign. Instead of paying for the whole thing, that would be a big problem.
Yeah, I. I'm not inclined to that, but I am not necessarily, because there's gonna be a period of time that passes before any building permits are issued. I'm not necessarily. You know, I, I think I'm willing to not put in a number into this because that could change, I, I'm, I'm willing to give Randy the discretion to. Figure it out, I mean, I, I don't.
He might figure it, it's more.
I leave that up, I mean, it could be, it, it could be higher, right, but I think it is. I'm, I am willing to leave that number out and let you and Randy hash it out. But at the end of the day, what he says is gonna be what the number is, right, so, um. Um, I sort of leave it to you as to whether you want me to put that number in that he's given us now. Um, or whether you wanna just leave it out so that there's not a set number and. Negotiate with him with the idea that it could go higher, right, um, could also go lower, but.
And then where, where is the holding to?
We've never put in a number, we've never had that number into a decision, to my knowledge. I could be wrong on that, this job's giving me a weird. I don't remember seeing sixty.
I tried to editorialize too much.
In a, I don't remember seeing an actual number in a decision.
You were gonna pull up the Greens, these decision.
I've always remembered just leaving it to Randy to figure out that number and being perfectly comfortable with that, like.
Maybe Randy has had problems in the past with people trying to negotiate three years into a development and that's. You should put it in the, in the writings.
Well, for the Greens West. One point for Mr. Doherty. At least on that page, I might wanna look through the character, I look at the same, uh.
Well, there's a chance it might be in the east. But I'm guessing it probably is the same as the west, for the most part. And I promise I have nothing to do with noble seeds, so I don't know what it's been, I don't know, but that has nothing to do with me. Um, or anybody on this board. Alright, so we'll get to that in the conditions. Uh, when we come to that, so, but.
Well, he kinda has to decide whether he wants us to put in a waiver, no matter how we were at money or not, or do you wanna? To put in your own sidewalks?
Well, I'll talk with my engineers tomorrow and Randy, so we can, you know, what the number actually means. Does it have to be paid off time before we start, or does it, it's gonna be taken from each building, which I think would be. Well, we'll talk about it, again, you know.
But, yeah, I mean, here's the, you know, I, I guess in my mind. Right, if this gets issued with a waiver of the sidewalk on one side, or you know, however the existence they plan is right now. If down the line, you decided, listen, it makes more sense for me to put sidewalks in on both sides. I'm not sure I consider that anything more than a minor modification.
If a lot is two hundred, linear foot lot, because that's what minimum lot is, and sixty dollars per foot is twelve thousand dollars. I mean, that's kind of.
So I, again, I, I, I don't mind you trying to figure that out with Randy, I mean, Randy's a pretty reasonable guy.
I wanna talk to him tomorrow.
Yep. So here's what I'd say is, I think it makes sense to sort of leave it the way it is, because we already have the site plan the way it is.
Right.
We'll put in the waiver, we'll take out that number. If, you know, you come up with a number with Randy and it makes sense, great, if you say it makes more sense for me to put in sidewalks on both sides. All you have to do is submit a, a new site plan which shows that and it's a minor modification, I think, in my mind, um, to what this is. And we can go down that, it's a later date. Okay. Um, alright, um. So that's five, so six. Anybody have an issue with six?
Alright. Now.
Conditions, what do we got up there, one or eight? Conditions, what do we got up there? One, or eight through. B, how about A through B?
It's not a set number. So you end up submitting, uh, to Randy Brown, uh, your schedule costs for a given phase.
Let's back John back up from just the beginning of that.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, it should be conditions of approval, uh, on the app. Okay, I'm like, that's fine. Yeah, no, it's fine. Anything with A, B, or, uh, C? And I assume the highlighting is just simply to call attention to particular things.
For Randy Brown was kind to take a walk through as we try to do better, right, uh, so we're under A. Those last two sentences for. Added to E, but if you, if anybody read something prior to, oh, now, those are new. The idea is to try to provide that opportunity to revisit the value. Uh, under our subdivision regulations, only if it's secured. Uh, for a bond or bank pass or some, some financial tool that, a, a lot manner. Uh, do we have that every two years revisiting and the planning board's ability to change? Or increase the value of the security. Our covenants from due bond, we granted, we're talking about, okay. Uh, you know, tracking the value of property versus construction costs, uh, it's not set up in the same fashion. So the ability for the planning board to take a look at this, um, while not relieving any of those obligations for infrastructure. Improvements. Or sidestepping that obligation should the security be through a performance bond. That's why I feel it's worried that way.
Jessica, you wanted to change?
At the end of that. Five percent coverage of such open spaces under management areas. In this application is twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four square feet.
Point five zero one acres.
Mm-hmm, converted to square footage. Twenty-one, eight, twenty-four. Thank you.
Alright, uh, you wanna just scroll down to Z and E, Joan, and we can kind of.
We have streetlights in sections proposed. There originally, there was a waiver submitted, and then Steve was like, um, I guess we're not doing that, or it was.
Yeah, but is that what's in the bylaw?
I, I will double check while we're going through this process, I believe, um, several writers say they shall be, but I.
They all, that's the only requirement, though, that's the one, not any. Okay.
The good truth I was on finding Helen. Didn't wanna do, and I was like, no, you're gonna put a street light there.
What the bylaw said, I want to make sure we weren't, the bylaw wasn't broader than that.
Okay.
Is it off there?
No.
The, at the, the deed sales of it, but what's required is that, so. I don't remember that.
Oh, I think that that is the kind of rough with. What I, was, as I entered into this role and observed. How lots are submitted to building department and signed up for what we call dimensional conformance, and so on and so forth. Uh, didn't quite align with all this height, which for sure. Um, as a conventional. Subdivision, I'm not sure. To what degree this requirement applies, I'm not convinced. Of this necessity versus the theoretical F R D where you have clustered homes and you have a greater sensitivity than society. Whereas there's a tremendous amount of opportunity for citing, given the size of these lots.
Yeah, I don't remember this, maybe I just missed it, or skipped over it, because it was a couple of questions, so. Uh, when I read it, I don't remember this detail being in the prior ones, I'm sure it probably was. I do remember. I remember that being issued. It, it's requiring it be reviewed by the planning board because it really realistically was withdrawn by. So I think that was gonna be a topic for discussion about whether, how to structure this. That's realistically, every lot is not coming from a planning board.
Good. So again, the building department approved them?
Man, I still think I want it in, even on a conventional. And I think I'm okay with letting it be approved by the town planner and by an executive. I don't think it needs, uh, so that, you know, there is, for the next few days together. And looking at every site, and I don't think we need that, so I think it should be submitted to. It's, you know, easy enough to just. You gotta bring it in. The building inspector to get the permit anyways, show it to the town planner and. Let them look at it just so that there's two eyes on it, um, but. So that we have the planning viewpoint, and the building inspector viewpoint. Um, so I think if we change that, that, that permit, that's everything.
I'll throw out another idea. I'm not trying to throw curveballs, but I recognize that, uh, a statement here is a tough one. The performance of the ASB conditions with the first site plan will be a condition on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So for what is for, our current building permit process, for example, doesn't circle back around. To my desk. At, for closeout purposes. So, we've looked at a couple, um, decent meetings where, I, I've got a site plan submitted and hear the subject and whatever else. But that's where been the extent of contact with that process. So to be fair, I'll bet if I. If we looked at. Okay, all of the flexible residential, for any subdivision, uh, lots constructed in the past five years. Maybe the one that required a variance over the Greens West would satisfy that condition. Probably wasn't prior to the certificate of occupancy. So, all I'm observing is that, uh. There's a certain burden there that is. Um, I don't know if it's necessarily onerous, but it certainly isn't, I mean, subject to follow through in their current practices.
Is the belly inspected, right? I'm not gonna thank you for that.
An, an ASB, an ASB for a single family residence that doesn't. Uh, have an issue, say, with proximity to wetlands, or is, you know, subject to a variance where they have, they have the very tight tolerances. That, that's where, at least in my, um, personal experience, I've seen it applied. So there is a certain burden that appears to be a little aitiful in terms of that. And in the end, I'm not sure who wants to own it.
Well, I mean, the reality is, I'm looking through this list, right, and I, I just, but. At some point, a, a site plan that has the building, location, the septic location, all that. Whether it's on one or second ones is coming into the time. Right, the corridor health is getting, the septic plan and the location and all that kind of stuff. We're getting, um. The location on the front, I mean, I, I guess I don't know whether it's in the building department or assessors or whoever, but at some point. Plan that shows the location of the building. Isn't passing.
Mm-hmm, that is correct, um. If there's any inclination that I'm watering things down, then.
No, I wanna, I mean, part of this, it's trying to make sure that. Because as I've said, I do wanna go through this chapter again, as well as. The other, like, what wants the development, and really. Go through them and make sure that they are actually. Uh, you know, updated and practical and. So if to the extent we can kind of tweak this as we're going along, in the actual condition, I think it makes sense. But I mean, if we run out the process, right, and the building inspector needs to look at them. A site. Before they issue a building plan, right, so that needs to happen, whether you do it or not. Suppose.
We, we do it in conjunction.
Okay.
I'm sure he's looking at the, what he, for the foundation, uh, for the concrete, but.
So where it says planning board in the second line, it probably should be changed to. Building inspector and town, right? Next sentence about what it includes seems perfectly fine to me, because all that stuff, again, pretty much has to be submitted anyways, to some degree. To a town department, is that fair?
Yeah, we wouldn't as applicable in there.
And that's fine, I, I mean, I think we could put that in there too. Um, some of that, you're right, is not gonna be. So in the next line, confirmation of the ASB conditions with the improved site plan would be a condition of issuance. I mean. In my mind, whether that actually comes to fruition or not, I still think it should be in there. So that if there's an issue, you can turn to a document and say there's an issue, right? Whether in reality that.
Sure, there is some protection afforded by that, that's why I don't wanna water it down, that's your inclination.
Okay. Alright, I mean, I think that should be in there, and then. You know, there are gonna be time considerations and we're both considering. I think it could be in there. Um, turn to it.
Okay. Thank you for entertaining.
Any, um, anything, any comments from the board about that? Alright, H through. Whatever fits on. And after we'll actually leave from calculated to the end of the sentence.
I have some language from other decisions, you'd like to see or hear that, but it won't be from Magnolia Terra. Because that will be very similar. Um, how about? So I said. Okay, so talking now. So. Prior language, it puts a period after revolving accounts, you know, that sound kind of crazy. This amount will be based on the projected cost of installation of the sidewalk, not installed. After the deposit, set it out prior to issuance of any building permits. This portion there gets replaced.
That much or there's the. I mean, I think that we put in what is based on, I mean, and I'm not sure that that's disputed, right, I mean, that's part of the bylaw. Not sure of choices.
If you could some fight, but I just read out loud. You do go, be great.
Where's that money going then?
Big side of the sidewalks.
I hope it goes to big side sidewalks.
Right, I mean, like, I think depot square assets.
Mm-hmm.
Probably checks. Right, everybody does.
Fair enough.
Uh, anything else on this page? How many systems are there?
Well, there's. Any number of systems that add up to the minimum gallon mid required.
Okay.
I couldn't look at.
No, it's, I'm fine. I mean, I, I.
It could be one.
Could it be one?
It could be one, I think the argument is that it's gonna be a real expensive single.
Obviously, so both the as and parentheses, right? Yeah, very. Uh, and then down at the second line, sorry, the second to last line, you gotta, the template, so yes, take it and go. Then, then it's dollar. Well, I guess you have system and dry hydrant system. Yeah. Yeah, that's not important, so. Uh, so two, anybody have anything for two? Good. Okay. R through. Three W. The RB fire systems.
I was proud inside the one before it was ordered. It didn't last longer.
Lot six seventeen and eighteen.
What's the interior stormwater? Parcel access and lot six seventeen eighteen. I wear the fire systems. And you got.
Okay.
You need to stick around?
No, you are welcome to. We're we're going through it as quickly as. I just, we gotta figure out where to put in. Do you get the language from that I want about the um? Uh delineating where the. Access to the open space.
You wish to hear the Greens West language?
Yeah. Which, when you are selling that lot. You should definitely make sure that homeowner knows that that exists right there.
I think that lot is not gonna be sold for a while.
It may very well be your lot, I don't know.
Yeah.
But who whoever has it, it was an issue at the Greens where they showed up and said, what the hell's going on? And so just so you know.
No, a hundred percent. I mean, that's understandable. It's gonna be on the plan. It's gonna be shown. It's gonna be deeded. The question is, who's gonna pay taxes on that open space?
Well, the.
Home away.
Yeah, open space is the HOA responsibility.
The homeowner is not gonna pay on the whole.
The homeowner doesn't own that part. That's that's deeded to the.
HOA.
To the HOA. So that's. You know, but again, it's just, it's more. People don't look at deeds and and planning board decisions. So, you know, just as a. It doesn't come up before. I would make sure if that gets sold, when it gets sold. You're letting them know that there's a trail that runs alongside their property that's gonna be delineated.
That's understandable. Thank you for your time. Okay, go on.
Okay.
The rest of the questions were good. I mean, Terry, we want to just a few on, you know, time and what it's. Thank you.
Uh, what was the language in the?
Eight ten foot wide stone pathway from the sidewalk to the open space where we're divided and access easement. That I maintain by the homeowners association.
Didn't take a change.
I got changed.
You're coming down on me.
Yeah. I mean, definitely, right?
Listen, you're coming down. I can't believe.
Uh, to be fair, I didn't know it. I not until you said, I knew that it was the fifty feet ultimately boulders. It didn't occur to me that that got changed until you just. Yeah. But that is, but wasn't there any something right in the beginning to? Like boulders at each side or something or like a.
Boulders to start and.
We wanted a marble. We settled for the rock.
That could all.
A ten foot wide grass path. I can't believe you're doing this. Uh, a ten foot wide grass path. Sidewalk to open space. Said pathway will be delineated by twenty four to thirty six inch diameter stone boulders, so fifty foot intervals. At a ten foot width, running the entire west side of the lot, starting within five feet of the sidewalk. With boulders within five feet of the end of the back.
Alright, so.
I'm I'm stressed out. I blocked that.
Cut and paste that language into your decision and then let's play around with it because it's not gonna be the same, but. Um.
Understood.
I think the beginning.
Having deja vu.
Beginning of a path has to have boulders. You have to go a certain distance that is marked up with the boulders. And then I'm fine.
I think it'd be like a diagram. You know, like a wooden type sign kind of thing, so so preserve whatever. It's sort of a diagram. We say, okay. You can walk this here, you go hundred fifty feet back and then it opens up to our space. Boys, how do you know it's going down there?
You're not inviting the public.
But the public shouldn't be there.
But as we were, as we learned with all the hunting issues, right? That is the property, that is the neighboring property owner's responsibility is to put up signs to delineate where their property is.
I use light view.
A lot of pets.
Dispose on the problems as to why this is a problematic issue. Let's talk about putting that in as present answers.
So I mean, I don't, I I think it just, here's, here's, and here's the other part of it. This is. I'm not. Naive enough to think that this is necessarily gonna play out like this. I think it's just you give it the best shot from Jump Street and hopefully it takes.
It's all money.
It takes.
It's all money.
It's yeah, and it and it becomes a trail that people use. I think that would be useful. But all we can do, I think, is. At least give it its best shot from the beginning. And then put something into a decision. That would. Allow a homeowner association, if they chose to do so, to perpetuate it and. You know, whoever and and maintain it, right? So at least it exists. It can be maintained if the group decides they wanna maintain. That's nothing the best you can do. You can't. Look, you know.
There's public access, anybody tell them, right?
No.
Think so.
We had that come up before. Came up in Greens.
The Greens have called that.
Yeah, we, you know, hashed us all out with the Greens. Um. Alright. Is this a new? You just put a new paragraph?
W. A new W.
Okay. So it's gotta be twenty foot wide, right?
Mark that right.
No, I think that's already. I've been on everyone.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna blame you for the meeting going long if you.
Payback. I love it, Mike. You show such growth.
Are you sure you want that grassed walkway to be twenty feet wide?
I didn't think that's twenty two, I think.
That's pretty hard.
It is a. Well, it's the grass, Terry. So I I mean, I think. The idea is that it's right. And that was, well, let me just say this, right? So that.
Funny.
Uh, as you probably just heard John say, the um. Originally in. The Greens, it was a stone path that went. Up and over. Um, and the pushback was. I mean, I'm sure there's, I can't remember, but I'm sure there's pushback on cost. But there was also pushback on it sort of between two properties and sort of allow it to be, you know. Not as to to sort of blend in with the properties and not just be this stone path that runs along. Um, it got changed to grounds, so it it. You know. In reality, probably gets maintained in large part by one of those neighbors. Um, you know, just mowing. Um, so it wasn't intended to be. Necessarily. I mean, I. It can sort of be natural.
I just, um. Cause you want, you want, you don't want them taking trees down for the whole thing and because it's a grassed walkway, right?
Yeah, no, 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 no. And let's be clear. I mean, I'm thinking of the first part of it, right? And not necessarily as you go on. Um, and we'll delineate that. This is different than what the Greens were. The Greens was a. Not, not this.
Mike, they should.
Would would it make more sense just to say it's a grass walkway pathway that is delineated every fifty feet by boulders? And let them decide the width. Or or a minimum width of X, you know, cause. I think if you say a twenty foot wide grass pathway, it suggests that that just gets cleared completely. I don't think that's your intent.
No, no. Yeah. And to be fair, I mean, I think I was just. To have in my head what the width of that. Area is, right?
Right.
I mean it.
We go to a with his table.
I mean, I suppose it doesn't matter all that much because it's just an open space. Ha, but I mean, the reality is, if you cut it down to anything less than twenty. You're basically giving more land to one of those neighbors.
I see what you're saying. Well, maybe, maybe, maybe you wanna have, maybe you wanna have them put the stone at. At the, along the leg boundaries to identify the boundary. And the grass pathway within it somewhere.
Yeah, I don't mind that. I I like the actual like wa- walking path does not have to be twenty feet wide by any stretch of the imagination. I just think. Delineating the boundaries of that. The parcel is probably. Useful because then otherwise.
I agree. I I think that's a good way to do it. You could do that for the the thin, the twenty foot leg. Um, and really clearly demarc where that is. With the boulders, it's a simple way to do it.
How far down? Now, you got, you got the spot in the front there where it comes to the end of the first property to the right of the square. And then you've got another seven hundred forty nine feet after that to get to where the five acres actually opens up. Wouldn't you, are you gonna? Clear a path down that, down the center of this twenty foot aisle?
Well, it's, a lot of it's already been cleared. Um, so you know, it's, yeah, they would need to clear a a. A walkway through there.
Yeah, and I, you know, I mean, I think, Terry, what you have suggested, which I think is. I mean, it's certainly not a permanent solution, but it seems like it's not gonna be a heck of a lot of work, given the amount of. Um, you know, wood chipping that is gonna be going on there, that if you just put wood chips down in that. You know, at least the beginning of it. Um. At least as an initial matter, it's probably a. A good way to delineate that as well.
It'll eventually turn to grass anyway, because it's turned to turn to dirt.
Yeah. But um, but I think. If that is a pretty. You know, low cost. Easy solution, given what is going on on that property. As a, as an initial way to mark it. Again, that's my biggest thing is let's try to get it marked out initially and then hopefully that. Takes on use and then it becomes. Maintained by the people who are there.
The first thing that's gonna pop through a wood chip base is gonna be something. Quirky more than likely, something with stout stem. Grasses are gonna be the first thing that comes through a wood chip.
Yeah.
It's gonna be something that's gonna be a pain in the butt to watch it. But they should be, you know, the 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 first section, if you wanna totally coat it over, that's fine, but there should be a path cut all the way down. That that seven hundred fifty feet, let that turn to grass. It's three, three paths with a mower and you're done. Um, if they wanna take care of it from time to time. Uh, but they should remove the trees from that pathway going down. That's a long walk.
Right, they, I would, I would say that. You wanna require a specific. Minimum width for the pathway to be.
Yeah, they have to be. You know, ten foot strip down the middle of that that twenty foot easement is more than enough. You know, it'll eventually just turn to a walking trail, but at least give it a good start.
That's fine. That's fine. That makes sense to me. Any logistical pushback from that, Terry, from your knowledge of the site?
No, I I think, you know, maybe it'll weave around a little bit, you know, but you know, if there's a tree or something, but. Um, you know, decent tree that they wanna avoid. But I think, I think to market the the property line for. Till you get to the trees. You know, it's that seven hundred feet. Seven hundred fifty feet, demarcating every fifty feet of that, of the property line itself. I think will go a long ways.
Little signs up, say you're fifty feet in, you're twenty feet away from being bear food.
There are a number of deer stands.
You are being watched at this point by mother nature.
That way.
And you know, bears up your part.
So it's not said pathway, so. Is it the southern side of lot four?
Lot four, and then I just fell off the tree slash open space. So they. I just labeled on lot six. We've got two. Acts. Independent one lot four. And then a week, the shoulder. Lots of, shall I share the?
Okay.
Interior.
And then lot four is the one in the back. What about lot thirty?
Did I? What I have, what, where's lot thirty?
Am I, is that the right one?
No, so.
That's larger.
Uh seventeen and eighteen. The other one doesn't require any access to another lot. Which you probably talked about, everyone had to be more baited.
That's what we're going down.
I guess I've given myself an out of that.
Alright, here's what I'd say. A- after lot four. Just hit return a couple of times and we will.
That's fine.
We will process the. And change the X. That's not gonna be X. No, just, just get rid of the X. Yeah.
He's trying. He's trying.
Alright, so a ten foot wide grass pathway from sidewalk.
No, sort of.
First street to the open space. Just change it to open space. Um. Will be provided at the access to the. Open space on the southern side of lot four. So that's. That enter that strip of land that runs along.
That's correct.
Um. So the ten foot wide grass pathway will run for what length?
Seven hundred forty nine feet to get to the, to the edge of the where a square is open to to the big part.
Okay. So the ten foot wide ground. I will be provided the access. To run, you know, you can write to run seven hundred forty. Seven hundred forty nine feet? You got that down.
So it was on the plan.
Okay. Um, so after lot four, between a four and a period, right? Um, for um. Um, so after lot four, between a four and a period, right, um, for um. What I shared. So seven hundred and ninety-six.
Before they get a tree.
Seven, seven hundred and ninety, first, first hundred and seven hundred and six. Yeah, approximately seven hundred and ninety-six feet to the.
How many times can I say open space in the same sentence?
This is why it sounds easier like in the eighteen hundreds, right? Stone marker at the Smith property.
You, you do that, Mike, and this way here, those quads get a running start before they hit the first tree.
It's a good straight run.
And then, okay, so the next sentence will be. Of the open space. Access strip. As we're calling. And then you can put that. Down below where it says will be delineated. You can, you can cut, take that into there. You don't have to put that last part. That after lot eight down there, until next. So I think if I. Five feet of the end of. No, uh, yes, yes. That makes sense, yeah. Alright, so that takes care of that. We need to then talk about lot six and lots. I think it's thirteen, but I could be wrong. Whatever the one is on the bottom, right hand side of the plan.
That's how I oriented myself. No, it's not seventeen.
That's thirteen.
Where's Terry on?
Okay. Those side out. Western.
I'm sorry, were you asking me something?
Nah, we're good. Um, so. Lot four is the other one? No, I'm sorry, but I. I'm sorry, start of lot four is where the other one is. No, I'm special. Alright, so then the next sentence will be. So how are we delineating? How are we delineating?
Uh, well, there's one that's a real path per se, right? Just. Just walk off the street and there you are, right? I don't know what we should do, but.
What was that?
Uh, the two other open spaces.
Where the basins are, how do you wanna delineate? Any access to those, if at all, right?
I mean, once you got a path, there's like an access, right? Which we do the same basic things here.
The open space about by more finding, I don't think there's any need to. I mean, it would be up to the law owners of twenty-eight and twenty-seven if they wanna put something.
Well, they're not allowed. Cause it's open space, it's all by the homeowners association.
I mean, on their lot, like if they wanted to put something up to.
They really would, eh, so that. No, but I think, uh, so the way I, I. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight come down, there is a tree line right there between. Their property and the open space.
Already, okay.
Already, yeah, and so I suspect that's kinda just to say a tree line, right? And so the open space is gonna be. It's sort of like a field right now.
I mean, the, the access to. Stormwater basin to open space there, I mean.
Yeah, so that's fine. I mean, I, I'm more concerned about the one in the back, so I don't know. Anybody care about the other two and have access?
If you're careful, he wants to put sidewalks every time he sells a lot. Those aren't being sold, it's a lot, so technically you wanna do a sidewalk.
Well, I mean, it doesn't matter, cause it's not happening. So I'm not, I can't even get my head around how it play out, but yeah, no, it's not happening. Um, I mean, the only thing I was thinking is. Potentially. You could divide, define it by phase, right, um. Right, so that. You'd only have to pay in. The sidewalk that's not being installed for phase one and then pay in. Phase two, then pay in phase three, then pay in phase four. But I still think.
Some sort of security for each phase that is.
So I, I think that that has to be, alright, so I think we just leave the rest of it out. I think you're gonna erase that stuff on the bottom and then just go straight.
Well, they already had the sidewalks going around. The outer band. Of all the roads, including all the, both sides of the geese cul-de-sac, so it's just that inner curve that is gonna be missing.
Yeah, not bad. Alright, um, anything with X, Y, and Z? Well, we can talk about the Z timeframe, right? Well, and I'm looking at the screen, I'm looking at the screen.
Why on your paper?
I don't have it, why does it have my paper? I don't know why it's on paper date. I'm looking for Z.
That's an after ten o'clock, huh? Alright, any issue with? The first two on the page? Second two on the page, I guess, no? Um, the last one. Wait, where was he talking about the thing about that? I don't know, he was talking for the same three months.
We've got. And then this one, trying to step forth. An expectation. Deadline for infrastructure. Think you can go back and request an extension, but this at least.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Explain that to him, but I do think especially this one, this is the other one, when we get to it, we can talk about it, right? Because I. I appreciate that there's seasonal. Issues at play there, that's fine, we can talk about that when we get to it. This one. I think we leave it because especially with the concessions on the cul-de-sac. Issue, the, you know, like the whole turnaround, whatever turnaround that, that. I think leave it at this and let him come back with. If he wants to try to extend it, that's fine, but convey that, and if you haven't already. That he, you know, if he needed. Come back with justification, with product extended.
And Terry, you, you able to hear that?
Yeah, can you just add that he just needs to request an extension? Is clear?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it says, I mean, it's, I guess implied where it says unless modified by the planning board, right? So he has the right to come back and request the modification of the permit.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and, and at that point in time, we will take a look and say, okay, are we still just on phase one? Or does he need just an extra half a year or a year to? Button everything up. Completed and.
He's saying he needs seven years.
And that's fine, eh, this is meant to be just a. A, a. It's meant to be a check-in point to. To make sure on a, in my mind at least, I'm not speaking for everybody, in my mind, it's meant to be a check-in point on a project where we are. Letting him. Basically build a giant cul-de-sac for the first three phases. Um, make sure that stuff is moving along so that we are. Getting to the point where it is a conforming development, right? Um, that in my mind is, this is sort of the, the check on that. Um, I don't have, eh, as Jessica said, if. In five years. He's just moving on to say phase four. Okay, that's fine, right? Come back and get a modification of it, and that's fine. But if in five years he's. Still working on phase one, then we really gotta start having some discussions about. The reality of having this long cul-de-sac in there. That's the way I, I look at it, I, I don't know.
No, that's, that's reasonable, I mean. Cause at that point, you're gonna have to decide if, if. You know, you need to use bond money to complete a section or whatever.
I mean, I, the reality is, is that. If he's reasonably. You know, doing this in a reasonable fashion, and, and there's obviously, if any project of this size gonna be. You know, outside forces that you're not thinking about right now or that you're not expecting, but. If he's moving along reasonably. The town has zero desire to come in and do it themselves, I mean, it just. You know, even if he's moving along, okay, there, they have zero desire to come in and take it over, so. Uh, you know.
We just had projects in the past, Terry, that have gotten. Way past the timeframe for completion, and now we're still trying to fix up the problems a decade and a half later.
We don't wanna get stuck with one big long cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't see much. Potential downside, I get that it's how it reads, but. Reality is, is that if he needed more time, I don't think the town would have any problem whatsoever, even if none of us are still on this board, I don't think there'd be any issue with it whatsoever. And, and it's, yeah, as you just said, I mean, part of this is. Sort of our. Our. Consideration of recent events with other developments that went before this and, and just, you know, it may be a little bit. More than what is necessary, but as long as people are. Are being. You know, reasonable in the way they're going about it, we generally don't have any problem with. Them doing it, or modifying whatever needs to be modified. We've just had a couple that have blown up pretty decently. So we wanna make sure that we don't. Get into that again.
I can appreciate that.
Alright, so we are all set with those, or are there any other conditions? That, uh, needed to be added? Good, thanks, okay, alright, um, we can just quickly look at this, this is pretty, for the play, right? So. We will second that, we can go on to the.
Stormwater management. I know the check section for a. I did, I didn't. That was solely at the direction of. Don't sell yourself short, Tom. You should, I, I recall a few things about the Magnolia. Um, terrace. Approval, that might be, hasn't lifted. While I'm saying, I can be honest, man.
Alright, stormwater management permit findings, anybody have any? Issues with. One eighty-three. There are new sections, that's a new. It's a little bit wrong here, I haven't. Spent any time looking at it, it's the enforcement action and whether. How this interacts with that, right?
It's just hunting that down.
I mean, I think it. In large part probably means that move, right?
Yeah, I believe at this point he's addressed the requirements of the enforcement.
Yeah, I, I, as far as. The, Terry, do you have a memory of what the? Requirements were in the enforcement action that he had to do?
Uh, mainly that he needed to file a stormwater management permit. Uh, and in doing so, needed to, um. Have a SWIP prepared for the site. You know, an EPA SWIP. And do the registration for that. Um, he had some. Stabilization stuff that he had to address, which I believe is all set. And he's been working with Randy on. You know, and making sure that he's to speed on it, so I'm pretty sure he's in compliance at the moment. Um, I don't have that in front of me. I can't tell you exactly what it is.
I have a earlier draft with Randy enforcement escaping me at the moment. But that's generally correct, the site doesn't Terry, right? Uh, the filing with the NITP's. Uh, program and. Filing for stormwater management permit was over the mandated steps. Uh, the site is generally stable now, that's fair to say, Terry, with the exception of perhaps. Uh, that, that first entrance road, which will, you know, that'll be a continuous. Issue, uh, so I was looking at this. Issue, uh, so I was looking at this, we're gonna seeking that information from the enforcement as well, uh, Mr. Doherty. Only to. Look at adding the requested flexibility into that timeframe, uh. If I recall the route of that suggested timeframe, the idea was to. Say, maintain some pressure. That's moved to a point where we can start getting some of the construction through the stormwater controls in place. But I don't see any issue with the site remaining as it is. Until. Uh, contractor selected and was able to begin work.
Right, and they have to just maintain. Erosion and whatever else standards that. That, you know, throughout the construction.
That's correct. Yeah, that that's a requirement of the stormwater management plan, that that. Once he begins construction out there, he's gotta do weekly inspections. Of the erosion controls out there. Um. And he'll have to, he has to designate somebody that's gonna actually do that. Um, work as part of the SWIP and so on.
All right, so I can imagine that any enforcement action is gonna have, um. Anything that is going to supersede or need to sort of continue on other than beyond what? It's gonna be in here. This will just control.
The the requirements were, um. To have a site visit out there with conservation, DPW and planning. Um, number two is to prepare the stormwater pollution plan. And file notice of intent with EPA, and three was submitting complete application for plans for. The definitive subdivision. So.
All right, um.
John, where are you? Where'd you go? I'm sorry, we'll move down to the.
No, that's fine, because one and two are are. Um, yes, yes, okay, so we can move on to. Three through ten. Um. Right, so the one he brought up was six there. Um. He talked me through it from a stormwater management perspective, right? I mean, maybe saying. As for depends on how you define what kind of stormwater management system, um, but also. I mean, it seems like it does have a point of where in August and. Ninety days seems reasonably. Quick and takes you right into a period where you're probably not gonna do a hell of a lot.
Yeah, I mean, you, it depending on when he gets started. You may not wanna be tearing out all these big areas. As we go into winter and so on. To to start constructing stormwater features. Because that that's gonna be a big disturbance in itself. It's tree clearing, you know? Lot of grubbing. Um, and then. You know, actually trying to get things routed to it. So. Um, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna come in and he's gotta get that wetland crossing in first, get the culverts in place. Head walls. Um, then have an actual access to the site. He'll start coming up the hill. And laying in the road and he'll. He'll need to get that basin. And then, um. At that point, then he can start moving over and clearing the trees and start building his basin. Um. Start taking that stuff. You know, it's kind of a a. I guess you could say he'll he'll start getting some in. As he's, as he builds the road, but he's gotta have a way to. Not flood, flood everything with sediment and. End up in an uncontrollable situation.
So. That was nine months. And you would have asked, somebody asked a question about security, whether that overlapped if you were with. Um. The security for the subdivision as a whole. Maybe Randy just asked that question. Um, as I see it, uh, I called out number seven. And. But as far as I can. Envision. The. Method of security for the subdivision infrastructure, I think satisfies that. Um, I go a separate condition.
All right.
Sorry, I thought it was a real word tonight, Randy.
Yeah, that is good. All right, I think that's good. Uh, and can you go back? And just one last thing to the, um. Just occurred to me with the, um. That space pack. Did we talk about sort of? May insert or? Anything? Or just in, just making sure that the borrowers have to stay there kind of thing? Right, um. Let me just, I just wanted to look at the language one more time and make sure. Yeah. Will and shall, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Like the stormwater.
I think we're all done with that, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a? Yawn.
Takes the yawn away.
Finish that sentence. Um, I just want to.
Yeah, yeah.
If you do, it's almost shot, be nice.
No, nope, no, absolutely not. You're gonna have so many votes here today. We're gonna be most making motions.
We gotta run them in order.
Yeah, I'm gonna go through it all. So do I hear a motion to? Um. Waive the requirement under chapter three fifteen twelve B. That the definitive plan be prepared at a scale of one inch equals forty feet and allow it to be prepared at a scale of one inch equals. Sixty feet.
Dave's being a so moved.
Take a closer second.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's being aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Can we waive the reading and just say more, uh, motion number one, two, and three, and four?
Um. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Because we've already read them.
It's a good. Do I hear a motion regarding waiver number two as included in this decision?
Dave's being someone.
Take a closer second.
Right, uh. Your roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Um. Motion, um. To approve the waiver number three.
Dave's being assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's being aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Right here, motion to approve waiver number four.
Dave's being assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Right here, a motion to approve waiver number five.
Dave's being assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's being aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Right here, a motion to approve waiver number six.
Dave's being assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Best part was you need me because you didn't answer yet.
Oh. That's a bedtime, Tony.
All right. You are here in motion to, um. Close the conditions as contained in this written decision upon the approval of the definitive plan.
Dave's being assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the definitive plan based on the? Uh, including the conditions of approval. Um, included, Karen.
Dave's been assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. Do I hear? A motion. To grant the stormwater management permit for this subdivision with the conditions set forth. In this written decision.
Dave being assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Do I hear a motion to? Um, approve this written decision as amended here tonight.
Dave's been assembled.
Take a closer second.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Fantastic.
Hello.
I like your shortening technique. Very good. I would expect nothing less from a day upstate.
Efficiency, buddy, efficiency.
All right.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a good night, Jerry.
Um. Derek Drive? Or is that just on our radar that that's going to?
It's it's on our radar. I don't, so. Uh, I don't know. I don't know if it's be dangerous. I think it was, uh, referred to us, but we we said danger formal. I don't have a copy of it.
That's my understanding of it too, it was sort of talked about and. It hasn't made its way here.
That's correct, so, uh.
You're gonna look at.
Learning of that, uh, we have, it's just there for. Let's explore the future day.
Exactly, so all we have left is. Signs.
Step counts.
John. Anywhere development, those developments behind Big Y that has a street sign. The development behind Big Y. There's no street signs.
Are you asking whether in the wide?
Noble steed crossing.
Crossing, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that's true, there is a reason. I don't know what it might be. Didn't have a sign at one point in time, or much thing about the street. They had a construction sign, but there's nothing.
It had like a white wooden, like noble steed crossing sign, didn't it?
It might. I don't think it is, no, they used to have.
Oh, it happened to, but it disappeared.
Let's, let's just get the road paper, so some where.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I paid the balance, the balance of something mystery. Fifty-seven. Well, savings.
Yeah.
Didn't even pay Tampa loan from, and there.
No, it'll be cut it in.
I didn't open client, what's needed to do? Those eight weeks now.
All right, where are these pretty signs?
Hold on.
We don't have to judge whether the spell I do.
Thankfully now.
Okay.
Get your spell checked on. It's in.
That's a teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Don't make me write my.
No, ma'am.
There's like. For five signs.
Ah.
Okay, uh, eighteen Hudson Drive, the Wally Computing Associates warehouse. So we see the. The building, the two down, off at forty in the front, they have two signs proposed.
Can we get that in blue?
On the building. Not eliminated. And, let's see.
Did we get a site locale for the?
We do, don't know that in the chat. I'll get, I'll get there. The second one is a a bit of what we'll call it, a pre staying sign. Uh, doesn't qualify solely for direction. This is. Um. Before my time, so we're below the fifty foot threshold per side. Uh, let's get back to this site location itself. Requirement for pre staying signs has to be greater than. Ten feet behind the. Right of way. I will have to provide a, um, follow-up distinction, but zoom in on this scenario. Um, so we see the proposed sign. Of for travel north of the entrance driveway. So I'll make sure that they, uh, see the clarification, let minimum time be back from the property, otherwise they hit their marks for. Area, for definite location. All right. Oh, ready to go.
Uh, do I, what was the, do I hear a, uh? What do we do, eighteen?
This is eighteen.
Do I hear a motion for a positive recommendation for this proposed. Signs at eighteen Hudson Drive? Dave's been assembled.
Take a closer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Take a closer eye. David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. There with me, we'll get over to. One forty-one conum on. Very quick. Hmm, so I can be just something for the other day, huh? The confusion or something?
Which one are you talking about? There's Coffee Canvas Cafe. And Fusion.
Long time.
Was there in the parking, that's the one.
Okay. To the board members' points, we have sign applications for the Coffee Canvas Cafe. And the. Fusion Bar and Grill. These are non-illuminated. Aluminum signs, black and white. Wall mounted, uh, because of the significant length of buildings and we. Separate areas designated to each use. They meet the area requirements.
Of course, they're already up anyways.
They may be up already. I have not. Directionally. They weren't waiting, huh? This is a good time to tell them we want, uh, more color. Something to really sell the the town spirit. And maybe some food and drink as well.
Um, all right, do I hear a, uh? Motion for a positive recommendation for the sign, the one forty-one conum.
Dave's been assembled.
Take a closer second.
He's been aye.
Take a closer eye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right. Planning board member and staff comments.
Are you gonna share your letters?
Thank you for reminding me. I will share that, uh, after the meeting. You you guess like you passed the test.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My fashion.
All right. We're good. Uh, Mr. Sutton.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Dave's being second.
All of the voters say aye.
Aye.
Right.
I'll also pay for the state of.
Now, what were you supposed to say, John? What do y'all need to see? You have a good night.
Perfect timing, I have two percent.